Okay, so it is 8:06. Happy December. Start with the review of the minutes. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I had a question actually about the nitrogen generator for the sprinkler system. Can't remember if I asked this before because it says it'll cost approximately $24,000, I assume, to purchase this, but we also have to keep in mind the maintenance to operate it, the operating costs, so I imagine there's costs to that too.
Yeah, I've got no information on that part of things.
I feel like I might have asked something, I don't know if it was specifically about that.
Well, from what I understand, that will prevent us from having to spend additional funds down.
Right, but we probably have to, I don't know, I assume we purchase the nitrogen periodically to keep it in the lines. It's not like a one-time purchase, there's going to be costs to keep it going year after year, so we need to keep that in mind.
You mean like topping it off if we purchase a system or something?
I mean, I agree, anytime you add a system, you have to maintain that system. And so, will that cost more than the general maintenance of the current system where they're flushing lines and periodically that kind of stuff? It's a good Bob question, I think, so we can ask him.
We could call him if you want.
You actually could.
Okay, so that's not really a change, that's just a question. Just a question, yeah.
So that's something we'd like answered by the next one, next meeting?
It'd be nice to have, because we're doing the budget, so as we think about the budget...
I also discovered yesterday, which was too late to change the agenda, that the, you guys did not vote on the school improvement plan, but you put it back in for a vote, it's not on the agenda as a vote. So, you know, it'll be up to you, if you feel, I mean Chrissy's ready to present it now, you could do, you could hold the vote over to next time, or you could tentatively vote it, and just we could put it on the next one agenda for the official vote.
Are you okay to vote on the school improvement plan?
It's not on the agenda.
We had talked about it last meeting.
Are we allowed to do that?
You know what, you could tentatively vote it today, and then we'll just, I'll put it on the agenda just to do it, to affirm it the next time.
But at least it's sort of...
At least she can move forward and not go against it.
Yeah, why don't we do that, preliminary vote. Okay, so are we ready to pass the minutes?
Sure.
Executing.
My favor. Okay, great. Financial statements. Judy, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I have a stack of wants for your signature.
I'll start with that, please.
I'll start with that for you. You have three sets of results that you requested. One is the monthly expenditure report for the local funds. You're looking in really good shape for this time of the year. You're halfway through the year, you haven't gone through half of your budget yet, so I don't see any lines that cause any real concern as I look at this.
I saw one negative, which is a stipend for curriculum development. We had nothing budgeted, I see we paid $800 on something for a stipend for that, I'm not sure what it was.
And I don't know, and I can certainly find that answer for you.
I figured that, so I didn't know if you...
Most of the work got done over the summer, so I'm not sure if it's just someone submitted an honorarium after the summer was over.
It's just a question here on the second page there, we have a negative of $800, so...
Yeah, I noticed there's a couple of small things that we can take care of, but I mean, nothing of huge concern.
And the other thing is, since we started the year September, you know, August, is it August 1st, I see that we spent money in legal, school committee legal fees.
So that would be for the ongoing retainers as well?
Okay.
I can see if there's anything, I'm trying to think, but we have not really done anything. There's been no legal issues here outside of renewing contracts or that kind of stuff, but I don't know if there's any carryover from last year.
The year starts July 1st.
July 1st, so that was all kind of straightened out.
No exceptions, right. Thanks.
I noticed that you're using a lot more lines that are more accurate, which also creates negatives, because there were no budgets in those lines before, so that's helpful actually, though, to see where these things come in.
Right, making sure that it's coded properly for reporting purposes as well. So, yeah, but I mean, I didn't, nothing jumped off the page, a couple of small negative balances, but, you know, overall, you're in a very healthy place. You still have 66.21% remaining, and at halfway through the year, that's a great place to be.
Now, a lot of that will be enough like salaries as we go forward.
Yes, yeah, but your sort of discretionary expenditure lines, you know, school supplies, things like that, that all happens very early on, so there's not a lot of that activity happening, because obviously, you know, Kristen doesn't want to, we're trying to scramble to buy supplies, everything gets bought upfront, so a lot of those lines are all done, so basically, yeah, you're looking at the bigger items in terms of salaries and those kinds of things, so.
That's good of me.
And then at your request, we put together a couple of reports on the revolving accounts, just kind of showing the activity in those accounts. And I did a little bit of analysis based on the starting balances in those accounts as well.
Oh, great, thank you.
So that you can actually see what your cash flow is, so I'll pass these. That's the school choice one, comes the child fund one. But just showed your starting balance. It's kind of hard to read the financial software statements.
Yeah.
They're a little tough, so. So basically, we're looking at school choice, your starting balance coming into the school year was $205,912.44. You've gotten almost $94,000 in tuition, so your total opening balance plus revenue received is just shy of $300,000. And then you can see year-to-date what has been spent out of that account, so again, you've got a healthy, positive cash balance. And the same is true with the early childhood fund. Again, you started the year with $60,8325, you've gotten $33,405, then you change in revenue and tuitions, so again, that, you know, in terms of cash flow, you started with $94,000 and change. Your expenses to date are $67,000, almost $68,000, so again, you're in just, I mean, 26, your balance, excuse me, your balance at this point is almost $68,000. So again, cash flow-wise, you're in a really good spot for both of those funds, and obviously you'll have more school choice and more tuition money coming in as the year progresses.
How does the school choice money come in? Do you know what the pattern is there? Is it like one big lump sum?
It comes in on a monthly basis.
It does?
Yeah, usually the Department of Revenue, you know, they sort of base it on your October 1 counts, and then again, in March, you do your enrollment again, the state dips in and sort of uses a full-time equivalency, and we're the backpedal, either, you know, sucking more money back away from you, or giving you more if you have more kids in, so that's kind of how they work it out. So it's not necessarily an even stream of revenue when it comes in month to month, but it's something that...
So there is money coming in all year?
Yeah.
Because the one thing I noticed is the $214,000 balance in the school choice is less than the rest of our budget in the school choice account.
Right, but yeah, yes.
So for those that are new, we used to have enough money in the account to cover the whole budget all year before, while we weren't waiting for the revenue to come in. Now we're in this place where we have to rely on the revenues that are coming in. So it's just looking like...
And that's sort of something we continue to monitor as well.
But early education, we are not in that situation here.
No, you're in a good spot there.
Enough to cover the rest of the year if we had to, even though there's more money coming in.
Is the goal to start next year with roughly the same balance going forward as we had beginning of this year?
It used to be, it used to be the conventional wisdom that you sort of relied on the years' prior income to build your budget. With budgets increasingly tightening and Chapter 70, the legislature just can't seem to get that across the finish line for whatever reason, I think that it's a case of, it's not, you know, you have to be a little more mindful of that. So again, as we get closer to the end of the year, as we start budget planning, trying to project out, you know, how many school choice kids do you have coming in, how much revenue is that approximately, what do you think you'll end the year with, so that you know going forward what your own balance will be, so those would be some of the projections we need to do.
I have a question. Over the years, with school choice money, we used to be able to use it more for kid-related things, now we're using it more for salary-related things, and I know why we do, to try to keep our budget down, we put these over to school choice, but if we do have a year where we might be able to take some of these salaries and put them back into the budget, because we took them out of there at one time, to help that, you know, two and a half or less budget, you know, I'm a firm believer, if we can get some of these salaries off of school choice and bring it back into our budget, I think...
Yeah, well, that's the next question.
It's a difficult balancing act, it really is, because again, if you're looking at salaries and you're paying, you're relying on, you know, school choice or grants or whatever else, you really have to be very careful about that, so just thinking through, you know, is it salaries you want to put into those pots, or is it something else you want to put into those pots? And can you put enough of something else into those pots to make it work? Those are sort of overarching questions.
And I have information from a collaborative regarding where the school choice trends are and where Waitley sits in comparative, and there's a few schools like Waitley that you have to be very careful, because it's supplementing your budget with school choice, and if that ever changes, you gotta, so if you start putting salaries on school choice, and then you get a drop in school choice, then you're, when you have to adjust your, what you're spending on, so, you know, as Judy was saying earlier, the old process was, you always had that money in the rear, so to speak, it was kind of like a savings account to work off of, to buy the extras that you were saying for the kiddos, you know, supplies, you know, equipment, a capital front, capital expenditure, that kind of stuff, but now that Waitley is in the position where it is using those funds moving forward, so we do have to keep an eye on what our choice numbers are, and if there's ever a big fluctuation, then we're going to have to adjust accordingly, and either, at that point, this committee will have to decide how it makes up the shortfall, because it increased the budget to the town, has to find other ways, things, or does it make cuts, you know, so, right now, we're healthy, and there's no reason, there's no reason that...
It's good to keep this all in mind as we go forward.
Right, exactly, it's good to understand that, that's a different, most schools are not in the situation that Waitley's in. There are other schools similar to you, but most schools in Mid Valley are not balancing in that such way.
Because it used to be really nice to have a rainy day fund, because the town would say, well geez, you do have $50,000 in your school choice money, but we're also, if something happens, we can dip into it, well, we really can't dip into it if we had an emergency that we needed $30,000 or $40,000 or $50,000 like we used to have years ago. Now we're, instead of, you know, spending in the rear, we're spending a year ahead of time monies, right? We're spending a year ahead of monies, and it's like, we're robbing from Peter to pay for Paul, is a proper way of saying it. You know, I'm not sure what we're doing with the budget this year, or how our budget is that you guys are working on, but, you know, maybe something, one of these could come out and be put into our budget to give us a little bit more, so we don't take into the future money to pay for these that we can pay for out of our regular budget and stuff, but when the time comes, we may, we may have to, and then hopefully the school choice kids keep our money in, so it does help us a lot.
I mean, my thing is, I think we just need to keep thinking of the budget as three pieces, it's the general fund, the school choice, I mean, early education, that's sort of the whole budget for the school, it's not just the general fund that keeps us going.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Well, I just know that sometimes looking at ledger sheets on accounting software is like...
Yeah, no, this is very, I did this myself afterwards, but thank you. And then the salaries, you did outline this, there was a report that showed which salaries from which sources.
Right, from which sources, so again, just so you could see who's, you know, who's who and what's what.
Because I think the idea was that all the classroom teachers, and they're always in the general budget, I believe, and trying to move a few, I know we moved this cafeteria recently, just to kind of try and reinforce whichever positions we can, so it's mostly the aides that are in the school choice budget.
Right, and as you can see, early childhood is funded from two sources. You know, your Spanish teacher is from school choice, your reading teacher is from school choice, and your grant, so it's not in your local budget. And then, you've got one clerical salary that's covered by early childhood tuition, you know, cafeteria, actual payroll as we've projected it out versus what you budgeted for, that's in a good place. Instruction aid is, again, in a good place as well. Custodians, you have a custodian, they can...
We have an accountant for sure.
Right, so while that looks like a nice $15,000, $15,000 number, yeah, until you get that filled, you know, that won't certainly impact that in the future, so, so again, just kind of a little snapshot in time, which every budget is.
So unless it specifies it's from the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. And early childhood can only go to pay for things with a budget, early childhood, right?
Correct.
So, one of the challenges. But it's great that it is, started seemingly covering most of its expenses, which is...
Yes.
Was the question when we first signed it, so, great, so we're in good shape on the budget to start, move it out next year. Any other questions?
So like the Spanish and the reading, does it say somewhere how much of school choice is covering that?
All of school choi, Spanish is covering all of the school choice, and reading is 50/50 between those two funding sources.
There's a little more than that coming out of school choice, though, I mean, it's like $150,000, $170,000, so I was thinking there must be something else also in there?
For salaries?
For teacher salaries, but you probably aren't...
There are some instructional, there are some instructional aides that are out of school choice as well, so that's why that, you know, looks a little bit higher.
What's the difference between a sped aide and a regular instructional aide? Is there a difference, or is, like, is a sped aide in addition to a classroom aide?
Yeah, it would be driven by a child IEP.
Right, right, and then if it's a school choice, if the sped aide is directly working with a school choice student, we can get additional school choice funds to cover that, so you get $5,000 plus the additional needs required by the IEP.
Are those usually one-on-ones?
Depends on, depends on the need, you know, and a lot of times, you may not call it a one-to-one, but if that, they're maybe, defer to Chrissy, but they may be focusing on that, making sure that child's set before getting everybody else around the child set, maybe more focused there. Trying to get away from a lot of just one-to-one IAs where they assign just one person.
So being increased adult assistance would be what the IEP would say.
That would be more in high school, and doing some...
Even in high school, we're trying to go away from that model, where they're helping the entire class with a focus on the ones who's students have been increased, and sometimes you will get one-to-ones with it, I don't think it's happening lately, but, you know, specialized programs where the student, you know, literally needs assistance, you know, every, almost every moment, you know what I mean, or monitoring two assistants, and so that's going to be more specialized programs rather than general, so.
Yeah, I just noticed they were broken out, two different lines.
And it's also for end-of-year reporting purposes, you have to classify your regular expenses and your specialized expenses separately from each other, purposes as stated before.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, it's very clear, I appreciate all the actual...
You're welcome.
Be helpful as we head into the new budgets inside. Okay, so, public comment, is there anybody here that would like to make a comment?
No, I'm here.
Enjoy the coffee and donuts. Unfinished business, so is there more to talk about on capital projects?
Just give you an update on, right now, we have the, we had to redo the bids for the sprinklers, they're expected to be in next week, and there's already a few interesting parties, so, they're already talking with, just curtain on the side, regarding when they could come in and do it, and if it can't happen during vacations, if there's any disruption to the building, how would that look like? Can we do some rotating of, just before Chrissy? You know, we may be disturb the upper level class if she really wants not to disturb the lower level class, in the sense that maybe you had to move them out of a room for a day so they can get that room done, but they're trying to figure out that allows the, the less specific you can get within the bid about when they can come in, the better we can get financially, so...
So that's good that we got bids, because we were worried we weren't going to get some...
We were concerned, so we'll see if they're viable.
Viable.
But those are next week, and the generator's in, they put the line in, they now have to make the entry into the building, basically build a, drill a core hole, that kind of thing, that's supposed to happen next week. So both things are, this meeting was next week, I'd have a lot more to share on those two projects.
So the bids with the sprinklers, that's...
So that's out.
That includes that prevailing minimum wage, whatever that, I don't even know what that means.
Correct.
Yeah, somebody can't undercut somebody else by paying their workers less than what is sort of the average wage for that classification of employee, so it's a way to make sure that employees are being paid fairly, you know, during the bid process, and that somebody can't get a bid because they're not going to pay their employees the way they should.
Something they require when they do like public projects.
Okay.
So, and the phones and telecoms, that's the other one that's always lingering, the clocks?
We have clocks, we do have them.
The clocks? Where is the clock? Oh, it's open. Excellent.
We still cannot make announcements from any phone other than the 1980s style phone that's on the list.
But we know we can come...
We can come and talk.
We have a great new phone, so. So the next is the intercom, final intercom.
Yeah, I think that's the only piece that's left.
Okay.
It's kind of a big piece though, safety wise.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? We have the project, so, marijuana facility, I know Mariana spit about going to the last meetings.
So the planning board approved, they voted and approved to send it to the zoning board, and then the zoning board meeting was the other night, Bob and I were there, and Chrissy came after her school council meeting, but that part had already finished. They did not vote because they were down a member, a voting member, so they're going to vote, I think, December 20th maybe, but it sounds like it's going to go through. I did ask, like, if it gets approved, and, you know, they've got their criteria, there's supposed to be no odor, you know, whatever the other...
There's like seven things they were...
Well, those are changes they were making to the plan, but part of the criteria. I want to know, after it's approved, they start their business, they're growing, all that, what, what plan, to make sure there's a plan in place, that they're going to continue to meet the criteria, that it wasn't just that they're approved, okay, there they go, and then they could just go off and, nobody is going to be checking this.
Monitoring.
Monitoring. It's, the zoning board said that's not part of their job, that it would be going to, I think, the Board of Health and the building inspector. We're a small town, I don't know if we have a full-time board of, I thought maybe the Board of Health was a volunteer position, I'm not sure.
They get paid.
No, I think it's from the county.
You know, we do have a Board of Health, and they do get paid just like, just like we do, I, we do have a health, we have one from, I think the lady, if it's the same lady, she lives up in Greenfield, but she's our agent or whatever, as, you know, somebody that works with the Board of, the Board of Health and stuff, so...
But she's not going to be a 24-hour, 24/7 position, and we have evening and weekend things, and if there was something, I think we need to get some sort of a policy or procedure in place, and maybe we need to meet with some of these Board of Health building inspectors to find out what the plan is, because I'm not comfortable just letting it go, I think we need to make sure there's a plan in place.
I think, well, didn't they also say something about if they had somebody calling, complaining about, we'll say, odor or something like that, then you would have to call the Board of Health, I'm not sure if you can call...
You'd have to call one of those too.
Call the police, and ask them about, you know...
It didn't seem clear, they did not, that wasn't part of their job, so I don't think it's clear who we call, or what the procedure's going to be, so I think we need to be clear about that.
Keep asking it to be clarified.
Yes.
In other words, if there's a complaint, where's the, who's the phone number?
Who do you call?
Who do we call first, or who do we call second?
Right, we have an evening or weekend function, and say there is a strong odor during that growing phase, and we have families and kids here, I mean, there's probably, they're not going to be able to remove that odor immediately, but we need to let someone know, someone who, the building inspector or the Board of Health, maybe they want to come down and smell it themselves, if, I don't know if they take our word for it, I just think it needs to be clear, there needs to be a plan.
So they, you left it with the zoning board explained how they thought it would happen, but it wasn't...
They didn't seem to be involved in this process. Once they approve it, it's out of their hands, and they're going to review it in a year to make sure they're meeting their criteria. The guy on the zoning board said, well, I don't think they're going to go through all this trouble and not meet, continue to meet the criteria, but I just want to make sure, just in case, you know, maybe the first year they do meet it, and then they start slacking off, I don't know, I don't know how these businesses run, it's the first one, it's very close to the school, and I think we need to be, you know, on top of it, yeah.
Especially if the wind blows out of the south. Wind blows out of the south, you'll get...
It will be the first one, right, the neighbors are going to care too.
You could, you could probably smell it if it blew out of the south, you know, if they, something broke down, or something, but if it blew any other direction, it's just like Yankee Candle, I mean, unless it blows out of the south, southwest, you're never going to smell it here, because it's...
We smell Yankee Candle here all the time.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, but I was going to smell it if it blows out...
It's just fine, I don't want the same thing to happen.
It's in the same path, so I think...
It's a candle.
We can just call Yankee Candle and tell them to crank it up a little bit.
The other thing is, that Chrissy brought up to me that I didn't think about, because when you look at the plans, or their diagrams, they're going to have a fence around the greenhouses that's going to have barbed wire.
Barbed wire?
Yeah, it's just not going to, it's going to look like a prison, I, it's not going to, and our kids play out here and can see that, so, I don't, I don't know if we have any control over that, I don't think we do, but it would have been nice if they put bushes or trees to cover that.
Well, didn't the town of Waitley require Yankee to plant large, tall bushes in front of those silos? I'm not sure, I believe so.
Well, we can, I mean, the select board oversees all of this, right, so we could request the select board to clarify the process for reporting.
My thing is, are they going to be building new high-tech greenhouses?
No.
Or are they just going to use what's there?
No, they're just moving that existing.
Because what's there, is this your ordinary vegetable, little quonset hut type of configuration?
But they're going to be shifting two of them somehow, I think, I think it was two...
Or cutting off part of it or something?
Yeah, because they didn't meet the setback requirement, so they're lopping them off one side, and putting it on the back end, we'll meet closer to us.
I think it was like, going to be maybe 600, 700 feet from the school, requirement was 500 feet.
600 and 700?
Six, I don't know if that's exactly...
Very specific, okay.
I, I'm from my memory, and it met the criteria.
But one of the points, I know, I know one of the points was 900, because they were going from one of the corners over here to the corner over there, when they were talking the other night, the setbacks or whatever, one was 900, might have been from that corner over there to, if not to, this corner over here. to, if not to, this corner over here. But they meet the set, I guess they...
They met all the requirements.
They met all the requirements and stuff, so.
But I think they're also trying to be good neighbors, so like for the greenery, I think we could ask, we could certainly ask if they would consider putting in some sort of, you know, vegetation.
I mean, for security purposes, anybody can come up to the fence and take a pair of cutters and cut through the fence and get into any of these greenhouses, and then you really can't put...
There's a security cut right in the middle.
Yeah, but, but there again, they're growing in the other ones, but there again, it's, it's like, if we cut a hole in the fence and there's no lights, and I could sneak in stealth, go in and take, you know, if you had lights, at least it's a little bit determined, but there again, if you have lights, the neighbors don't want the lights, and they're going to have to put up on different sides in the greenhouse, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to have to put up some type of netting or something or blockage for the light doesn't shine back into these people's backyards.
It's one of the criteria, no light pollution, no odor from the property line.
Yeah, the neighbors have the similar concerns that we do.
Yeah, and they're closer.
I'm concerned that the parents of the children who go to school here don't really know that this is going on.
I think one parent showed up the night of the zoning board, that was behind us near the doorway and stuff. I heard him, I heard him saying something.
They were required to notify the butters, we didn't actually get notification.
The town did get...
Right, but I don't, I don't know what the requirements were on notifying the rest of the town.
Well, it's been going on for a couple of years.
There's talk, I mean, there must be talk between parents, I mean...
Many don't know, I don't think.
Yeah, they're not, people aren't paying attention, it doesn't mean that they haven't been, they've had quite a few open meetings about it. It's just that I don't think as many people are paying attention until it becomes more real.
And the address is Christian Lane, so I don't think people are associating that with the school, because that's way over there. They don't, I don't know if they realize the property of butts.
You know, as long as, as long as they follow the requirement, especially, you know, the air pollution with the right filters and stuff, I think it'll be fine, but if they don't, then, then somebody's going to have to, somebody's going to have to address it. The agent of the Board of Health or the Board of Health, if that's what, if they're the ones, if we find out they're the ones, then maybe they need to be making periodically checks of, of the property or of the school. With the south wind, do they smell anything?
Yeah, that's what we have to clarify.
So I'm hearing that, would you like me to write a letter to the select board asking for clarification of the process? If there is issues, if approved, we'll report that so that we have some ease, so that we have some ease. We are put, we are put to some ease regarding that there is a process, that if there is an issue, that it'll be addressed and not lost in a small school.
That it can be taken care of right away in the moment. And not just for issues that come up, but that there's some sort of periodic monitoring or something. Right, we don't want to be the ones having to monitor everything.
Right.
Chrissy will go out there with a monitor every morning?
Well, I just don't want the kids to smell it, I mean, that's the whole thing.
That's the main thing.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer they not look at something that appears to be prison-like next door. But, you know, the questions will come from kids when they can smell it, so that's my main concern.
Okay, that's great, so if you don't, if you could draft up a...
I'll draft it, get it up here, yep.
New business, school lunch, financial update, is that?
Yep, you should have in front of you a profit loss statement, really straightforward.
Is there one?
It's in your pile right there, maybe, right there? It's just a single page.
Basically, we are in good shape, you know, we start off the year with a, we've always talked about it's very difficult to break even in a small school when it takes two people to serve lunch, and, you know, it's more personnel than needed for the actual, the food per service hour. But if you look at that, you can see we're in the, in the positive by $104 through November, and that includes some of the early supply items. Yes, we were talking earlier about other things, you buy a lot of your supplies early. It also includes a software bill and a longevity bonus to an employee. So some of those things that are one-time costs were early on, so, you know, we're in a good, we're in a good spot right there.
That's great.
This is, you know, an account that, you know, traditionally has gone over, and we've had to find other ways to support it and bail it out, and as you'll see in many food service things, so we're in good shape here, they're doing a good job for food service hour and, you know, I think the, Mike, I don't know how often you want these reports, I'm thinking maybe every three months, kind of give the updates unless something alarming happens.
So we're pretty even right now, which is unusual.
We're pretty even, and, and just as a, when we talk about things on a whole, across the district, almost every building is...
That's great.
There's only one building that has a... The new model is working, and food sales are up in most buildings. Yes, number of sales have gone up, and we are waiting right now to do the online purchasing system. They're hoping to have that in place after January 1st, but it has to go through the town treasurer, so we just have to coordinate that and get the, if it is going in other schools and parents can elect to pay online, and it just kind of gets rid of...
Is that with their credit card?
They can put it in their credit card, there is a, there is a convenience fee. I know I pay at my kid's school, but it's one of those things, you put a credit card in and it bills you every, every three months. It makes, it does make life easy, although some people, if they don't want to do the convenience fee, they can still do the old, sign the check, have the kids bring it in, but I think we'll find that many people will, you know, will take advantage of that service just to make...
Put their old debit card in there and, yeah, that'd be great.
And also, you know, you can see when your kids are buying lunch and, you know, you can have an idea of what's going on, so.
How much they're getting.
Not taking their money, you go buying candy or something like that.
No, they don't offer that here.
Well, no, after school.
Well, if you give them cash, if you give them cash, yes.
Yeah, well, that's great, good job getting it out to you, because this has been a perennial challenge. We'll see where it ends up at the end of the year.
Right, we'll see, and it does, it is a, you know, when you talk about, you know, we're struggling with other systems if someone's out of their sick time and have to give them substitutes, so it is kind of a, it's a very, it's a very, yeah, there's a very thin line margin, so... But at least, and I think the goal to the school is that you don't have a huge loss.
Right.
So even if we do show up in the red slightly, that's not unheard of for, I think, for tuning, you jump in. It's not unheard of at all for school systems, if you look around, some of them have gone way over.
Thousands of dollars.
That's thousands, but if we can get close to being...
School food services, the ban of existence. Yeah, this is... No, I think we've always thought we have a budget for a loss, but the smaller the loss, the better.
That's, that's the goal, I think that's, I think that's a realistic goal.
It's a choice to covet it.
Right, and I think if we can, if our goal is to get as, the small amount of loss as possible, then we end up in the positive, that's the... But we're in a good shot, spot right now.
Okay, budget.
Budget timeframe, you should, in your packet that was from me, there is a budget calendar. And you can kind of just, it's very similar to the ones you're seeing in years past, those are going to be years past. Just kind of give us a timeline of what's coming up. As you can see, with our end result of town meeting on April 30th. Principal's meeting next, this week, this is not next week, this is this week, for the, going through the budgets and starting to prepare what the, the needs are, what we're projecting for next year. And then, you know, next month we start the first round of looking at it, and then, you know, all things work, so.
Do we want, do we want to change our, do we want to change our meeting and talk about that?
It's probably a good time to talk about it, yeah. So January 7th is a Monday, if you want to move that to January 8th on a Tuesday. I just know, I'm going to just project out there that first thing Monday mornings, and I know families and such, it's very hard on Monday morning to get up and get going compared to a Tuesday, so I don't know if you, if you want to move it to the 8th. It's your pleasure, do you have anything else? Moving it over one day.
Does that work for...
I frontier that night, but that doesn't affect the morning, so.
Why had it been moved to the night, the Thursday?
Right away, I hope, so what happened was, is, you know, to, to reduce the number of nights out, but with negotiations, two of the negotiation, I think that's not happened at all, but, was we were combining, doing several meetings in one day. And so, the trade-off, and I did a trade-off not knowing what the, how this was going to work out and the nervousness around doing the morning meetings, but there was nervousness, was that, you know, during budget season, we'll go back to the traditional model, have five night meetings for January, February, March, for the five schools. So if this committee is liking the way the morning, the morning meetings are going, you know, I am all for, I'm all for, you know...
You know, let's do January, and then, and then in January, we can make a decision on February, if, if that's, if that's working well for us, and unless we get a complaint from, somebody from the town that really wanted to come at that night, if they're retired, they come in the morning.
Do the budget meetings tend to attract more of the public?
Not so much.
Not here.
And they, you guys can make a decision, you look at the March 4th, maybe we do the public hearing, maybe the public hearing should happen that evening, we kind of, you know, maybe we mark that, that's when we won't move.
We just have to, wherever the meeting gets posted, make sure it gets changed.
So none of these have been posted yet, so, and so Donna, we will post it after this meeting, we kind of post from month to month, and if there's a change, we can post that. So if you liked, so how do people feel about January, Tuesday, January 8th?
At 8:00 AM?
And quite frankly, if you want to go to the second week, you can even do that, it's, I think, I don't know why...
Well, that's the second Tuesday.
That is the second Tuesday, yeah. I think that's frontier two, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be better for me, the 8th.
Kill two birds with one stone.
Long day for you, Donna.
I'll be retired by then. I could take a nap, I could take a nap in between.
Are you going to be away?
Uh, no.
Is that towards the end of the year?
No, I'm not.
I thought you were going to jump here and there.
No, that's been canceled, she's, they moved her to San Diego.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so we agreed to meet on, at 8:00 AM on the 8th. And then we'll see how, if we need more time, I mean, I can actually, and you tell us, but not anticipating a huge budget deliberation given how things are going.
No, you just don't know what to ask for, yeah.
Until I, until we hear more from you guys.
You know when we get the budget books, is it next meeting?
I don't know, we'll have to work that out, so this is...
I'm just looking at the budget.
I would say so, we usually, last year we had three versions and that would...
How's it going, could you tell us how it's going?
Well, we're meeting this week with the principals, we're just starting that process.
And I'm new at this, so, looks good from here.
And Judy's been brought on board to help us with that, so she's learning.
Thank God, we got Judy. She's been through it a couple times.
There's already a built-in increase in the salary, right, for the teachers, like that's the biggest expense that we have to cover.
Well, that's, and that's where, we're...
Is that in negotiation?
We're in negotiations, so we're going to have to put a holding number in place for there, and that gets kind of a little trickier.
Like a worst-case scenario type of thing?
Not worst cases, just conservative, we usually put a conservative number in there to hold that place moving forward based on past practices, and so, you know, we'll build that, and like I said, I, this is, I'm just being blunt, I haven't been through this process, and I'm working with TMS, who hasn't been with this process with us, so, there'll be a little bit, so please feel free to vocalize that, you know, you like this, or...
No worries, we're just all new at it.
I know, Katie.
That's good, we asked a lot of questions, we asked a lot of questions.
Yeah, and we'll figure it out.
Right now, what we're doing at TMS, we're building sort of an Excel budget master so that scenarios can be played out, those kinds of things, so we can do some, some things that'll help you kind of work through this whole process.
Okay, so that's where we're at there.
So next time you'll bring to us sort of your initial thoughts on the budget, is what you're saying, with the kind of way you first drafted, I think.
Did you mean wish list?
Well, I mean, it is good to get out there what we want.
Yeah, we, there's, some of it is wish list, in the sense of it, you know, because we have to, we started looking at percentages and things have to adjust, some of the things that...
See what we can afford and what we need to ask for.
Want versus needs.
Always, always remember, you know, if you're talking two and a half, one and seven, and one and three quarters is going to be new salaries and steps and stuff, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of room for new items or want items or something like that, unfortunately.
But then there's also the capital budget process for more, sort of one-time points, so you want to think about what the needs are.
When are the salary negotiations?
Right now, starting.
Uh, part of my report, so I'll give you, it's all...
He can't tell you.
I can, I can tell you, but it's all written down on that sheet, so it'll be all there for you.
Okay, so we changed our meeting, we'll get into it in January.
You got that, Mary?
Nothing, no pre, nothing particular to talk about yet.
No. I mean, that's coming.
Okay, so we'll move on to the reports, which we have the capital, so I had added capital as a report.
Right, but we just didn't update on it, so.
We did the update on that, so, I don't have any updates. Do you have a collab, any collateral?
We had a meeting last month, it was, there wasn't anything that we really need to report. We did their annual report and their annual audit that we voted and all their standard stuff. Yearing, hiring, separation, and, so, that's it.
So Chrissy, you want to do that?
Sure.
This curtain.
So just a couple of things going on here, fourth grade is doing a giving tree project, as you who are parents probably already know what that's about. So they kicked it off last week, and they're requesting a move of holiday gifts, which come in for the teachers to send in non-precipable food items, and then the students can designate that they're donating it in honor of someone on the staff. So we have a tree full of tags in the cafeteria and many boxes of food that have been donated, so we're doing a great job with that. And the fourth graders are even, they turned it into a math activity as well, they're graphing how many things they get every day, eventually they'll weigh that and figure out all of that. And Chief Savini happened to be here when we were kicking it off, so we sort of pulled him into it as a way to make it a little more exciting for the kids, that the, the goal is to fill up his cruiser.
Oh, wow, the new big cruiser, the like...
I think so.
Ward Explorer?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. The Global Leaders are also doing a drive to collect fleece, to donate, to keep the pet tour, waiting adoption comfortable. The school council met last week to review the proposed school improvement plan, it was accepted by the council after a couple of additions. And I'll go over that in a minute. We, we sort of got into talking about, you know, what the role of this school council might be, and we ended up discussing the opportunities that we provide for kids to, to explore their own interests and talents aside from the sort of academic instructional time, so we wanted to take a good look at that a little more creatively and create more opportunities. So the school improvement plan is in front of you, it is essentially the same, except where you see the highlighted areas, it's nothing that's changed in goal one, but in goal two...
You mean this highlighted?
Yeah, two, three, and four, there is a parent-family piece. So initially, I had talked to them about adding a fifth goal, it related to family and community engagement, but they felt like it was a better idea to keep it at four goals, so that we don't take on too much, and then just to add a parent component to the goals that are already there.
That's good, I like that.
When you're saying sharing, you're talking about your own child's scores and writing to the family?
Yeah.
I like them getting the writing, it's fun to be able to write.
Good morning, everyone, the time in the office is 8:56. Today's soup will be chicken noodle soup. I have a couple of announcements. We'd like to congratulate Emily Candelaria, she auditioned and made it into District Festival Orchestra. She will be performing at the UMass Fine Arts Center. Congratulations, Emily. Also, the Global Leaders will meet at 12:20. Also, the global leaders will meet at 12:20 in the library today. Could everyone stand for the pledge? And today we have Owen, Anne, Maddie.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
How was it?
You always hear it start off slow, and at the end, the last sentence.
That's great, so I, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, it was, we actually had a great conversation, it was nice to sit down and hear the parent perspective on things.
So should we take a preliminary vote on the plan, unless others, people have questions or anything?
I'll make a, a preliminary acceptance of the school improvement plan.
Second?
So maybe they're doing a preliminary vote, and then they're going to ask to put on the agenda, do the official vote, because we didn't get on the agenda this time, so just to make sure that's, the meanest reflects such.
Um, two other little things, we had polar express night on, on Saturday night, it was a chance for parents to drop their kids off and have a night out. Kids had a good time.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the parents expressed that those three hours went by really quickly.
Couldn't we do it longer?
They didn't go by that quickly here.
Yeah, next time we could do an overnight.
Yeah.
Right, overnight.
Wow.
I'm just kidding.
Who's the, who's the chaperones?
There were, um, six staff members that I was able to coax into giving up on Saturday night, Mary being one of them.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And thanks to Lola, because when the movie, um, ended a little bit early, um, she was in there entertaining the troops, so they were dancing, they were playing games, kids had a good time.
How many kids did you have?
No, fifty.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, and I found out that night that they even included, um, younger siblings of children who go to school here, so we had a two-year-old.
Two-year-old.
That's great.
We had to play man-to-man defense on that one. Um, and then on December 19th, we'll have our, uh, winter concert, and I trust you'll all be here. Are you retired by then?
No.
You must have some sick days you have to use up.
No, all gone. Used them all. A couple vacation days, though.
He's got, he signed up for the spring concert.
Um, and so we'll have the typical, um, instrumental music and singing, but the global leaders are also preparing little presentations about, um, celebrations of light around the world.
Oh, cool.
Um, and I don't know if we want to add this to my report, I have, um, some, some folks who want to play, or should we continue and then invite them in at the end?
Why don't we do it at the end? It's, we're almost done.
Yeah, I missed the beginning of the conversation.
Yeah, they twisted some arms yesterday.
Okay.
All right, so I'd pass it out to you, should we, like something like this, that says spring concert?
I don't know.
It was definitely a new spot, so that's, you know, the probable stat, you got her whole stack.
Yeah, sorry.
She came in, she's like, I'm here.
Okay.
Just updates on, so these are updates of stuff I've already been talking about, um, with the Christian Lane sale and the file storage, removing the files next week, and so we'll be out of the building by the end of the month, and I reached out to the buyer yesterday, um, and he's going to be talking with the town about what the closing date will be for that building, so-
Where are the files going again?
Um, in the Frontier, so we, I took over our closet there.
Finding a place for them.
Um, we had to arm wrestle the principal to get the closet, but, um, so it's going to go there, and, uh, and then we do some weeding and, and organizing them and getting them in good shape.
Are we still trying to shred and get the-
That's what I meant, by we, by weeding, meaning you go through, you take out what's not necessary, and-
Is Rhonda heading up this whole-
And Rhonda's, is taking the lead, so, um, so it's in the area where we have permanent files, and then most of other files, student files, and some student rec, uh, employee records and such, maybe for seven years, there's different timelines and different, so some are rotating and some are permanent.
Did we have to buy any, like, new boxes?
We did. We bought boxes and shelving and stuff. Now, this is all coming out, and I'll get the savings, um, to you, um, hopefully by next month, but we put a significant amount, we're going to pay a whole private firm to come in and do the whole thing, um, and I just didn't see the justification for that much. Um, it's a nice thing to have done, but given what I, where I thought the files were in, because our staff members in central office, they felt that they could get it into a spot where they can make it usable, not go to, you know, microfishing and that kind of stuff, um, which was not, everybody wasn't on board with that. So there'll be some money, um, savings there that will come back, I'll figure, want to figure out how that goes back to the, it goes back to the town, or goes back to the school, um, being a central office expense. Um, collective bargaining negotiations are underway for Frontier, um, we've already had our first meeting and set the next four meetings, and Union 38, his initial meeting is tomorrow. So we'll do our meet and greet tomorrow afternoon, and at that point, they'll schedule the meetings moving forward from there. Um, also moving forward, there will be, um, executive session will be on all of the agendas moving forward during negotiations, so if there's ever a time we need to, if you want updates about where things are at, we can go to executive session for that moving forward. So there's nothing to report this time, because we already had, we already had a strategy session, which we'll be doing at this, following the initial meeting.
How long does the negotiation usually last, or is there, it's unknown, I'm sure, right, a month?
Well, depending on, so scheduling, I mean, the, the scheduling of this one is obviously probably on the first, you do a meet and greet where you establish ground rules, and then you have your initial first real meeting where the proposals are put on the table. That'll probably happen in January, so I imagine the goal will probably be to get it done by the end of February. Um, the Frontier one, right now, the first four meetings are at the end of January, and the hope is to be close at that point, both sides agree that it's our hope. Um, so it just matters how often we meet, we're meeting every other week, you're going to do probably four or five, even in, even in a, um, successful, you know, progressing negotiation.
Yeah.
It can go much longer if you have whatever, and so there's two, there's two happening at the same time, so just for clarity, they're back-to-back, so, but they're, um, on the teacher's side, they have different representation, where we have the same representation for the school side. So we'll do an hour, an hour and a half of one, then the group will switch, and then an hour and a half of each other, you know, I see one and the other, IAs as one, and the teachers as the other. So, and they're going to, I don't know what the, Union 38 is going to do, Frontier decided to flip it, so there's, um, every other time, it's going to be A first, then C, then C, then A, so-
But we don't flip the person that goes to the leaders, so.
No, you guys will be there.
So we're there either way, it's like, yes, for us, it's very, it's very simple in the sense of showing up, but it's just a few, just you have an understanding of what we're talking about, and so-
Yeah, what's A and C, is one of them teachers one of them?
A is teachers, C is IAs, it's just the name of the contract. Uh, Unit A is-
Is there a B?
Used to be. Long time ago.
Yeah, um, and that follows if you had a custodial union, or, um, back in the day, or admin, what's an admin number, letter?
Uh, admin used to be, be back in the day.
Okay, so if Chrissy wants to union up with me-
Can I start my own union with all the Wheatley principals?
All the Wheatley.
Tough group. All right, um, the business manager service has been posted, and will be, um, accepting up until the 21st, um, bids for that, as we talked about, I think we talked about that at the joint meeting, which is kind of FYI, that that's all set to go moving forward. And then, as, just a reminder, January 22nd is the joint meeting, remember that joint meeting had to be put on, to, to have the, two major things on, the, the topic will be, be interim superintendent, and the, um, business manager position for the following year, um, and what the plan is, what the school committee wants to do at that point. Um, uh, last week I attended the, um, superintendent's, um, academic award, uh, what was it, a ceremony at Franklin Tech in MA Law, so a senior at Frontier, received that award, and that, that's usually presented at the Frontier meeting, but it's on my overall notes, and so congratulations to her, she's a fantastic kid, she's doing a lot of great things, and-
Great GPA.
Had a great GPA, a great, uh, and, uh, yeah, and she's, and she's involved in just about everything at all times, and so it's, she's at the school more than anybody else.
So what, what's the criteria for the award, how do you, do you get nominated?
I get, I take, it's done, um, basically you're looking at the, you know, top 10% of the class, and, um, they're nominated by the different administrators in the building, so I took four nominations, and, um, met with students, and interviewed them, and looked at what they're doing, and then talked about themselves, and, you know, it's like, so-
Is it more than GPA?
Yeah, absolutely. I look at the full community service, GPA, what else you're doing around the school, involvement, community involvement, and, you know, all of that, so, yeah. Um, and the last thing, I have a handout, um, one handout, no, you should have two handouts. One is the, um, I thought it was nice to pass on, that the select board of Conway wrote a note to, um, Commissioner Jeff Riley regarding the expansion of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School, um, and this was kind of, this is nothing I knew they were up to, so I thought it was nice that they, um, they're keeping an eye on things, and I just thought it was an example of what's going on there. And I also included, it says draft on it, but the collaborative, um, Bill Deal, William Deal wrote a, also wrote a note to, um, the opposite charter schools, and school redesign about, um, the concerns about the expansion of the Chinese immersion charter school. And it just, I thought the, the factual information that's in this, um, I thought was very interesting, and just to kind of keep, keep you all abreast of what's going on in the politics of that, um, and it's not really the, against the charter school, with the charter school funding, and how that's affecting, what's affecting us in the valley versus other, um, versus other places in the state, um, where it's very, it's very different in the funding thing, so, um-
So are they, are they getting it considered for another expansion? I thought they already tried twice.
They, they tried, they, they can try every year, so they got turned down.
So they can try every year?
I don't know if it's indefinite, but they, right now they're again trying this year, and so, um, the area superintendents, um, are, are working together to educate the state about where things stand, um, with that, and how if they were to become larger, what that means, the impact it would have on the area schools, especially given the funding model toward, um, charter schools, so, um-
Have we met with our new representatives at all in the area? Because we had new, brand new-
I have not, I have not, um, yeah, to get them to, I can tell you-
They're not in office yet until January.
You know, I'll bring it up, the, the superintendents of Franklin County do a round table, um-
That might be a good place for them.
About once a month, so I can see if that might be a nice time, let it come in, and just do, just a meet and greet to start things off.
It's an important topic, I mean.
Yep. Um, I also, yesterday we see, we're just talking about, um, educating the school committee, keeping them up to, to par about what's going on with, um, enrollment trends, and so I got this thing, and so I don't know if you want me to send it to you digitally, or if you'd like a, a copy of, but there's a lot of graphs and that kind of thing, but it just basically talks about where schools are in Franklin, Hampshire County regarding choice and enrollment trends, um, and I think it's very interesting for Wheatley, because Wheatley is one of those, is one of, you can see the other elementary schools are in a similar spot, where there's a large number of choice, um, and-
In or out.
Yeah, and, um, it just kind of shows that overall, so I don't know if you want it digitally, or I can make copies of it, or I can just pass around, then you can decide.
Can you make, can you make, can you make me a copy, or if it goes on, if you put it on, I can, I can print it at work or whatever?
Yeah, so I can, so, so, yeah, so-
Yeah, we definitely would like-
I just got it yesterday, and I was like, well, before I make a, a ton of colored copies, because it has to be in color for you to understand the graphs, um, and some people-
So it's just showing, so that, what's the headline, is that enrollment is going down in general?
Enrollment's going down in general, and it's just kind of, uh, where you can see the different communities that are affected by choice, um, and communities that are hurt by choice, um, just kind of, and you can see the trends, and then also the charter schools, it shows where the introduction of charter schools come in, and what their trends are on the population, um, of students, and so, and you just, you just, it's, it's data.
Right, all the lines are going this way, which is a little, that's what's mainly challenged.
Yeah, and I think you also have to remember, is when you look through the data, that, um, some of it's misleading when you look at it quickly, because we're, we're comparing, when you look at other area schools that may be regionalized K to 12, their numbers are much larger than ours, so you got to kind of look at proportionates when you, because we, you know, obviously are individual by each district, and then Frontier's a separate one, so when you're looking at Frontier, and you're comparing it to-
Amherst that has three, or Amherst versus Wheatley.
Right, not Amherst, we'll make a good example, but it would be, like, comparing it toward, um, like Mohawk, that's K to 12, so, um, that makes sense.
Sure, and has the public, the charter schools in it?
And has the charter schools in such shape too, so I thought it informed me, and like I said, I got it yesterday, and then I said I'll bring it in and see if anyone wants it.
Yes, yes.
So, just let me know. I think that's all I have.
You want to adjourn after the concert, or before the concert?
Well, I would love to, my advisors are telling us that they don't have to adjourn.
I mean, protocol is for performances adjourned.
Yeah.
Leave that to you.
Haven't, haven't come on in.
Okay.
Okay. Awesome. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Mark Riffey is in the supporting role.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you could sing in it.
We should have had you sing.
Great, well, that's awesome, thank you guys for coming.
And Emily, congratulations.
Make us congratulations.
Come back again. Okay, so that's it?
Make a motion to adjourn?
One second, I'll let you know. 9:15. Okay.